Start the Monday, June seventeenth, special meeting of the golf commission. Uh, call to order. Let's see, um, we can't do that, so I guess we're gonna go straight into, um, staff reports.
Peter.
Hello, everyone. Um, I think June has gone well and May was really good. I think Peter, Gracie and his staff were, uh, I constantly receive an compliment when I condition them at our course. Um, it's awesome. We're just about done with the outing season. We've got one more Monday, hopefully, of course, get a little break permit for a little while. Hopefully, we'll be going strong again in the fall. There's a couple sprinkled out in summer, but not many. Um, and they've gone very well. Everyone has, has come, has begged for a date again this year, so that's going very well.
So those will kick up again in September?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, all of September, the Mondays in September are on. And then it's just one last, the last October twenty-fourth is available.
Wow.
It's almost amazing.
Last year, the charity?
Well, the estimated, uh, charity for benefits was about a half a million bucks.
Four hundred million.
They raised.
Which one was that worth?
Just all of them combined.
Oh, all combined.
And they're all, what I'm, what I really think is great is they're all Fairfield community-based, very much, uh, that's really, it's really beautiful, credible.
Yeah.
But that's the money they raised on the revenue side. I mean, we did, everybody's getting charged out, have rates, I thought, pretty much?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
That needs, needs to be dealt with.
Right. And are there any more, um, Thursdays or the home Monday from here on?
Uh, well, the men's club had a Thursday, uh, I think, okay, yeah. That's the only other Thursday out there.
The men's club?
Yeah, they do, remember, get.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they do. Yeah, there's only one Thursday, which I think is more than fair. What, is that, oh, no, that's, Fairfield, Seattle, something.
And how are things, how are the, um, the other programming that's going on?
Everything has, has pulled out.
Yeah.
One hundred percent, uh, youth program. We have nine weeks to camp, uh, twenty-four kids in each week. No lessons, pad on the waiting list, right, Anthony?
Oh, great.
The man is already, it's very beautiful.
Yeah.
They started today.
Well, we say go out, so how many more kids?
I don't think we can.
Yeah.
I think we're absolutely. Yeah, I mean, a new, a, a short team there, I think, might help a little, but it's only going what you can do, because we go to the par three afterwards, and that takes up a chunk down there.
Yeah.
Every day, I mean, Monday through Thursday, yeah, I, I don't even kind of person at the team.
I don't know if it was a, their damn, uh, was it?
Yeah, but I would say it's, I don't know the mix, I would be guessing. I don't know, my idea, I would think predominantly Fairfield, though.
I would bet eighty.
Yeah, that's my guess.
Local kids.
Yeah, I think it's eighty percent. Could be, uh, yeah.
What, what makes the complimentary rounds? Is that staff that plays primarily?
Um, mostly this time of year. Uh, in, in May, you'll get the high school teams, junior high school teams.
And when you work here, you, you play for free or plus five dollars, I can't remember the rules?
It depends on, on the time of day and what day it is.
Okay. Is there a limit to the number of rounds they can play?
Not that I know.
No.
I don't take it to be an issue in any regard at all. I think.
Bob, are there major issues you're dealing with?
None. And I can, and they have no advantage for getting the tee time.
They're, they're in the same chum as every other.
And you'll see, you know, by the numbers, the comps are down significantly over years past.
Big time, yeah.
But you can't get home time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Very, very good.
And any thought on why the resident IDs are down sixty plus versus last year?
Sixty people?
I, I assume it's the three thirty-seven versus three ninety-three last year.
Sixty, I don't have any money, but sixty people, one of four thousand? I would think that would be in the.
What, what are you talking about?
Resident IDs, the top line adults, three thirty-seven May, three ninety-three last May, I, I don't understand what that is. That's, that's not people getting a resident card.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
People buying the resident card.
Oh, okay, so.
So if you look at.
Year's day, fourteen forty-four versus fifteen hundred.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Like you now, okay.
And you look at the total.
Yeah.
What's nice is we bumped the juniors some.
Yeah, you know, a little different junior, but, yeah. That's the rate.
Yeah, that's the rate.
Good.
Yeah, because what we thought they'd, or hoped that we'd do.
Yeah.
So I predicted the lockers are not selling. So you have to, you have to find a place for the lockers, or?
We're looking at demo. Put the cage in there, hoping to.
That's cool.
Well, how many lockers you take?
Three, four?
Eighty-four. Oh, no.
What, the idea was?
Yeah. So what's going on with the, um, the day? Is that?
Well, we have to remove those lockers, yeah, or some list of public works.
So we think of it as a next year thing?
Yeah, whenever Bob wants to have it done, I keep throwing it on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't want to remove them without a plan.
Totally, yeah.
So what has to happen to get the, the hitting net order of purchase?
I'll work with Bob, yeah.
I figure that.
Okay.
I think that's a good thing. In general, I think it'll be like that.
Yeah. I don't think we should cheap out on it either.
No.
They companyized the last, you know, it's, it's an amenity.
Okay. Anything else?
Crowe?
Nothing off the top of my head, no.
Turnip coming up?
Crowe?
Yeah.
Well, you actually have open qualifiers here.
Yeah, when is that?
The twenty-fifth.
June.
No, June, twenty-fifth, next week. We'll eat something up. There's a hundred and twenty players. It'd be pretty cool to see what they shoot.
Yeah.
Two, two, because they're going off until midnight or one?
A little later than that.
When is it?
Around eight and twenty, twenty dollars.
Thank you.
Ten minutes, three things, like four behind, probably knows about two thirty. Over under on IQs, if they caught up in Parkway.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, Anthony?
Yeah, uh, just going back to the numbers, since that's what I typically uncover. Um, we are going to exceed our budget on the revenue side by a little bit, probably a hundred thousand. We're lucky. Um, two point two was the budget, we're a little over, uh, two million right now on just the Smith side of things. Um, and then four, I think we're at four thirty-five for, uh, par three, so again, eight thousand. So we should be over budget on both, which would be great, uh, but again, we're not too far off of where we were last year. Uh, rounds wise and obviously, the increase is primarily due to green speed going up a dollar across the board, so, uh, we realize that, yes. Um, slightly down on IDs, but we're not far off again from where we were last year. So, um, happy with where the numbers are, so, um, hopefully those will all just continue to be, uh, you know, what we're seeing, uh, for the rest of the year.
June thirty is the end of this fiscal year, right?
June thirty, but we, on this chart, we keep both annual calendars.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, so just so you, you can see.
Yeah.
Some type of term there.
Yep, yep.
But it's June thirty.
Yep.
So fifty thousand rounds, ballpark, extra buck, fifty grand. What's the other fifty grand, is, is that something that, is it a quantify?
Well, on here, it is cart fees and driving range.
Cart fees, rough about.
Yeah, driving range.
Oh, yeah, I know. No, no, they're, they're messed up. You're at three sixty-five right now, uh, for this May, and you were at three forty-two last year for par, so that's twenty something thousand right there. And then driving range, uh, going to credit card only, the driving range is huge.
Yeah.
I mean, we were at one twelve last year, we're at one forty-five already.
Wow.
And that's, I've been trying to figure out what the, what the reason for that.
It's been extended hours, too.
But also, it was a disaster last year, I think, at Great, so you couldn't even go.
Yeah.
And it was a bad dog, worked the whole thing, so.
So, yeah, so those are the two categories. Those are the two categories we're seeing, you know, why, why we're up.
So if you would expect the range revenue for the year to be plus a hundred grand over last year, or, or the calendar year? Or I guess the calendar year, yeah.
Um.
Could be that.
I mean, if you only got a fiscal year. We're probably gonna end, we're probably gonna end at one seventy-five, if I had to guess, um, which is ten, if I remember correctly, it's either ten or fifteen overall, we budgeted. I think we budgeted one sixty or one sixty-five, and if I'm not mistaken, for the next fiscal year, starting June, July one, um, I want to say double, I think we're at almost three hundred, uh, for our range revenues. But again, that's all based on the new range, um, being installed, and that should be hoping, a break in ground hopefully in the next couple of weeks. All the contracts and POs have finally been issued and signed.
Great.
Move right along.
Cool.
It's in there, uh, budgetly, that, that, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Anthony?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead. Fill out what he, let me take this, what Anthony presented, I didn't do it, some data looked at it in a different way, and, uh, here's information, oh, I'm sorry, about the grounds. Bob got the, a, uh, summary from the year twenty twenty-two of the Connecticut section of the CFI, what is it about? TTP, yeah, yeah. And they rate courses as municipal, public, private, and I, uh, and only about a third of the courses had data. And I put it all together to summarize what I saw on this chart. What you can see is municipal courses ran from twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and ten to forty-nine nine twenty-one, with an average of thirty-six thousand, and that was the heaviest usage. That forty-nine nine twenty-one?
That's gotta be us.
Is us. We had the highest number of rounds on any course reported for the year twenty twenty-two. So we are way, way ahead of that in terms of rounds. So that's.
Nice of you, Anthony. And so what, they were saying municipal and public?
Uh, wow. Well, municipal, I wouldn't like town, well, yeah, county, public are probably, probably the only that allow.
Allow public, what?
Open to the public.
Same animal, pretty much, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and restructures can be a little.
Public would be, say, orange hills and where municipality is instead of national, Green Dressy Hill, or that's a public golf course, not a municipality.
Then that's part of the town, yeah.
But those would have interesting categories.
Yeah.
So if we have any ideas, like the last time we put the plan together, almost fifteen years ago, our sales pitch was that to fix up the course, you'll get more rounds. Then, then ain't gonna work. If anything, we gotta be careful that we maintain the course and not lose rounds.
That's right.
But we're not at a point yet of trying to figure out what we want to do, what, well, we'll record it when we get to the, on the, the chapter.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, Peter?
Uh, yeah, the guys are working hard. He's my foreman, uh, he's doing a good job, he's being a mechanic and the, uh, foreman, and, uh, just, uh, working real hard, and, uh, this looks good, they're, they're good compliments. Uh, we're gonna start on the ranges, we said, I have, uh, K and G, K three coming in, give us money, uh, surprise on clearing all that, behind all the netting, especially on the left-hand side. And, uh, company's gonna be coming in to fix the netting, so, uh, we can get some of those golf balls back, and probably about a hundred thousand golf balls. So that's, uh, and I got a couple more batches to do, or bench patios, we can do one on four and one on three. That's, those are, uh, not, not my priority, but, uh, we are gonna get those done in the next couple of weeks. Other than that, we just keep brewing, they get a lot of heat come to us, so hopefully, hold it together with all the heat, humidity coming. Uh, boys out here probably put their hoses, hose them in greens down, and keep it alive.
Any issues that have popped up since last meeting? Extraordinary?
Yeah.
The course was remarkably, was remarkably dry, I thought, after the monsoon we had the other night.
And we don't get it.
I don't know if it rained in downtown.
We're only gonna have, I know, because I was different up here.
Yeah.
I was going down, and the underpasses were flooded out down there, and up here, we got, we got half an inch.
Oh, well, that might explain it.
Yeah, because I, I shut everything down, too, uh, obviously, but, so, yeah, it's.
I think, man, I don't wanna rain, I don't wanna see true coverage of the rain, but I'd be curious to see, you know, how the repairs react.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, uh, what?
I believe so.
I'd love to see how it was raining, and you were asking on how it, how it reacted, because we got a W.
That's what I'm looking for, that I could, actually.
Or four.
We only got, and like I said, I think we just cut the outskirts of that last storm, and downtown got nailed, there were trees and everything else down. But, uh, we'll see what happens. That's all I can, you know, just all maintenance, the golf course right now.
Numbers just starting.
Trying to keep the customer satisfied.
Yeah.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't think greens have ever been this good this time of year, what I remember.
I'm chasing.
Well, I mean, the fog's about to go away, and so, yeah, yeah, it should, uh, if we can keep them moist, it should work.
Right, yeah. We spray them tomorrow. I guess it'll work. You know, that, that might turn out.
There's one, one thing, I don't know if it's for now or for the greens committee, but I'll throw it out now. Um, you have seed in some of the, uh, some of the boxes by the tee, but not all. Some of them have sand, some of them have dirt and, and seed.
We got the, well, the ones that's the two and the par threes, we have the seed, we get that special mix, actually, by the way, tomorrow's coming tomorrow, I mean, Wednesday, it's working. But the other one, it does have seed, and you just can't receive the sand, like, it's got, it's, it's all the sort of tiny plant grass seeds, like, just pop the seed. I mean, they didn't put a lot in it either, so, I mean, it could be.
It just doesn't, I don't see any growth, um, because, you know, obviously, you can tell there's between the, the dirt with the seed and, and the sand, so I, I just haven't seen it.
I think, like I said, I, maybe there is no seed in it, but as far as I know, we, we're still gonna mix it up.
Yeah, you can't see it, uh, I'll show you the, the. We're trying to use the new stuff everywhere. We, we never had it, and we're, we didn't know the volume and.
Yeah. And I do have, uh, going through it very quickly, and I do have a bunch of, uh, green seed mix, uh, rain mix, so, hopefully, the top grassy mix will be green.
So just, just take a peek the next time you're out there, because I, I literally don't see any, any growth with, with the sand stuff, but I, I may be missing some.
I don't know, a lot of times, what we do, put the seed in it, and then we use it, and then you got, you got grass going out of the box, I would have, so, I guess, uh, like I said, I don't, I'll check into it.
But I go to the box, and that'd be par three, um, so, I don't see anything that grows in, in the, in the boxes, so it's being used one way or another, I think.
Yeah, I'll check into it.
Cool, thanks.
All right, wanna keep rolling? Greens, Marner?
Do you want me, uh, I think everything's good, uh, the tee box, I mean, that forward tee box, I don't know what we can do about it.
I think we can, make a difference.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh.
Just couple of the, the tier.
And my, where does my white stuff arrive?
It wasn't hard, it's sand. I mean, there's, there's.
Oh, there's no grass there.
There's a little bit of grass in the front.
All irons, it's only, yeah.
Same seed. And it's small, and you can really only get off the middle of it anyway, by the way, it was marked.
Is there any sod they run, big sod, and just have to peel off on sod, or are we just, or they?
I don't, I, well, I mean, I can get some sod, but, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll take a look at that whole thing, I've got.
We can also peel off from, from the number two tees for a couple of weeks, too, if we can get that one.
Well, I know my weapon might rather peel off the number two.
Now, maybe, I, I don't like it, I like where it is now, but I'm just saying, maybe that would be a way to get it back.
I'll look into that.
More useful.
So it's in the air, but we've got those smaller tees, yeah.
Move, move out for.
Yeah.
Probably.
Just a couple of weeks.
Yeah, like we did on two, we shut down the two tee for a while.
Yeah.
And then it's up again.
We did it on, not even a couple of years ago, when you were standing out, but I don't think we can go from the ground on the, next to it, to the, the palm, all. Um, and I use a lot of the team, I go out, I go to the ball, I go to the ball, because if I'm standing there waiting, something I didn't want to approach is to walk around and say, oh.
Yeah. You got to go back to that.
I'm, I'm trying, we're trying to educate our league to do it, I, it's annoying when you're behind me, and there's the, the fresh in it, and it'll make them on.
Yes, I know.
Other than that, I think everything's good.
So I, I got a couple, uh, couple of questions. The, um, somebody took to, uh, with the lemon fairway and used it as a personal, um.
Chinerin track?
Yeah. And, I mean, not the total inferior, when you see how egregious it was, I, I, I heard a rumor you guys might have who did it. And Bob, I'm not asking you if that's, but, but we know who did it, we need to talk to that person or a person. Would you agree?
Well, the gentleman is a young kid, like, nineteen years old, and I banned him.
Okay, thank you.
For coming back here.
I appreciate that.
Um, we threatened him with fucking with the police.
That's my next question, what?
Yeah, I don't, I'm trying to learn what I can and can't do.
Okay.
Um, but I, I warned him, I saw him trying to do it one evening, I would have a late lesson, and he used to work at the driving range. And I told him, uh, you know, he's like, and his quote was, I'm getting dialed in. I said, not here, this is driving range.
Get you dialed in.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, it, it made me sick to my stomach, just, uh, I can't understand how someone would do something like that.
But it wasn't, it wasn't like he did it once, like, like, happened the other three or four times, but, all right, please, don't.
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully it'll work.
Another story, tonight, when I pulled out Congress on Moore, I was saying, first area there's spending, number two tee.
I know what you're gonna say.
Two kids got out of their car, they had a golf bag.
Blue Honda?
Uh, yeah.
Walking up the tee off on the number two tee. Yeah.
Ten kids?
No, that's, 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 that's new, uh, they jump on the spot now, is it?
Yeah, I figured.
You see a car there, right?
I did that.
Once in a while, and I sort of wondered what was going on, because, like.
These are the things that happen at golf courses, I mean, you could keep a ranger on until dark, but I think you're spending money that you're chasing money. But what's driving me crazy is that, oh, you could sneak on the course and then cause damage, blow my mind.
Right, right.
I mean, you, it's all win, and win's wrong with your mind, and literally, you think you'd be acting like a little chess behavior, right? Not taking a bucket of balls, rifle them, not only did he rifle them, he left.
Is that what they're doing?
On this one kid.
Uh, oh, yeah.
Either replacing.
But.
Never see him again.
Uh, I promise I'll be doing all right, right? Yeah. Hopefully, uh, he doesn't come back here ever again.
So, uh, again, thank you, um, for that. Um, the bunker issue, uh, the men's club, and I'm not, um, I don't represent the men's club, but they made a decision to, uh, put a, a local rule in place, you can lift clean in place in a bunker. Um, that was the men's club decision, I told them strongly, I thought it was a horrible idea, creating, um, very bad behavior. Um, and I also, quite honestly, I think it, it gives your staff, they can sit there and say, well, we don't have to do this bunker, because he's got their plan, lift clean and cheat, like, you know. So, the men's club made a decision not to, and we're gonna try to push our members to rate bunkers when they're in them, rate other footprints when they find them, so on and so forth. Um, I guess my question for you, Peter, is how often do you guys go at the bunkers? Is it once a week, twice a week, when they need them, uh?
Twice, usually twice a week.
Yeah. And you, you basically take the machine around, run through them, and break the edges, like, so. And, and personally, I don't have a huge, I mean, look, the bunkers, I don't like the sand, some of them don't like the rocks, I don't want to be on a footprint, but the bunkers are what they are, the municipal court. Till Mike gets the plan together, and we get the funding to redo bunkers, or get our sand, or both, we have to live with what we have. Um, but hopefully, the men's club will do their part and, and rate bunkers.
I know, it's my personally, it goes bottom, I don't know why we spent so much time, money, and effort on the hazard, but, uh, you know, I, a lot of people say, well, you're gonna rate bunkers, I said, well, you know, we've got the reason why we rate bunkers. But, uh, yeah, I mean, they are a little ratty out there, and, uh, there's not the best thing in the world. Then, so, as you said, the municipality and, uh, you know, I like to do it every day, but I just don't have the manpower to do it every day.
And if and when you need manpower, how do you get it approved?
Yeah, to go to, yeah, do you need more manpower?
Sorry?
Do you need more manpower? Good manpower, if I remember right, right now, I mean, landscape setup, these are paying twenty-four, twenty-five dollars an hour, because I just went through, and I just got, uh, I'm, right now, I'm pretty good.
Well, but, but, but your question, your point is a good one, like, how do we get, how do we get that approved to get more money for, for you to get more, to get more for the budget?
Uh, we got to go through the budget process.
Would, would it make sense to budget for two summer kids at twenty bucks an hour, for twenty hours, I, I don't know the answer, I just, if you're short, you know, you, you could have a kid go out and, well, I don't wanna have a kid kill them digits, but, um. And I think, if we need more, if we need more manpower, we have to find a way to get you another guy to.
Yeah, well, Anthony and I are working on that, and, uh, hopefully, of course, now we have one of the notice cycle, so, uh, we are, we're progressing positively, getting more help and better help.
Correct.
I feel.
Thank you.
What's up with the driving range?
Oh, what do we need? Anthony said, Anthony said, uh, all contracts, everything signed, ready to rock, I think we're just waiting on the concrete guy to say when he starts.
Yeah, about a week ago, he was two to three weeks out, so I think within the next two weeks, that project will be, uh.
Well, if it goes, it's gonna go.
Yeah.
And they're gonna keep it open. Well, we're gonna wait, we're hoping to, we gotta see. I don't want people walking through construction site, you know, a week.
Yeah.
We're hoping to.
Really?
Okay. Plus, we'll be preparing the netting, too, so I don't know what he needs.
Oh, yeah.
No.
Well, I gotta keep it, can't, we gotta figure out.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Figure it out.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, one, I like, if we have any, I'd be working, I'd be, you don't even, I don't wanna get it out.
Yeah, yeah.
But they, when they came out, they were hopeful that we could keep it open, so we'll, we'll see. Put that flag down, I think we'll really be able to tell.
I wish they can't be corralled with the.
I think it was a bad, we know it's bad.
It's not like.
I'm not worried.
The public coming in and being like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, you go the other end.
Well, maybe, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But I'm, uh, uh, it may have been a long journey, but, uh, we're.
Let's get her over.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna push it through.
You learn how the town works, right?
Yeah.
That's good.
But you're right, nothing's been stuck together with glue and stuff, yeah.
We gotta, we're gonna be good.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be great, so.
All right, move on to Mike, update on the men's subcommittee.
All right, thank you, uh, by the way, when I handed out that round, I meant to comment, and I forgot, Fairchild Wheeler, in that time frame, is seventy-four thousand five hundred, roughly. But that's with two courses. And that's with twelve months of location. So they're good at like thirty-seven thousand a course, over a twelve-month period, versus our forty-nine, for what, eight months?
I don't know what that's, yeah.
So everybody grab a tape over there for the winner, if anything, the rounds are not so much a few things.
Well, he, he found us a week around, what, a month or a month or?
They were, uh, I went to, uh, here by month, I went to, uh, COVID, I was under January, February, and there were ten thousand rounds in those four months, but it's combined with black hole, probably six, I don't know. So, it's a third of the year, but it's one.
Twenty rounds in case, like, uh, we have.
Can you tell?
All right, Marina Subcommittee, we've had two meetings, we're gonna have our third meeting tomorrow. Um, I met with, uh, one of the models we're using, as the previous plan was put together on with Craig Curly's leadership in twenty-ten, and I, I met, spent some time with Craig going through this. What they did may not be what we want to do, but what they did is they put together a plan, because they wanted to present to the town, both in the form of the board of selection, board of managers, LTM, a long-range plan for things that needed to be done for the golf course, to establish a reference against which each year they could come forward with project. And part of what they were trying to demonstrate was that they weren't being wild or crazy, it was the thing they wanted to do, that it was part of a master plan, and, and they were gonna stick with it over the ten-year period. Their initial presentations to the town, I think, was done in September of the year they did it, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, on the golf course. The idea being that they weren't asking at that point for anything, it was more of an educational presentation to present to the towns, to those three town bodies, what was going on at the golf course, what we had in mind, what we felt we could do in the long term. The one thing they had going for them, as I mentioned earlier, that we don't, was that they felt that, so, improvements in the course would add grounds, bring in revenue, and offset some of the costs. So we kind of nominally, as a committee, have said, "Okay, if that's our model, we need to be ready by this September," and Anthony, part of what I wanted to tell you about, I don't know whether that matches. They tried to present all that stuff to the town before the town got tied up in the fall capital operating budget process. And I don't know whether September is the day or not, but if it is, that puts a tremendous amount of pressure on us to do our thing, to be together, to present at least to you guys, probably at the first, if not the first meeting in August, no later than the first meeting in September, what we all are proposing. Where we are now is, we're still working on the project list. We've gone through the project list, uh, unfortunately, a tremendous amount of this work comes to rest on Peter. Uh, and, and, uh, our, our objective for tomorrow's meeting is to do our best to come away with a long-range plan list of stuff to do. Whether we'll have it all costed out and all that kind of stuff remains to be seen. And we all know what the base subjects are, cart paths, bunkers, uh, uh, other miscellaneous things, sand, yeah, I, I went through and I'm not gonna bother you guys with this with the handout, but I've done a Google Earth on the whole course and identified all of the cart paths, either good, bad, missing, or whatever, thinking that, you know, we, we may not be able to do the whole course all at once, but it's cost-effective to do it in large chunks because it takes a contractor some time and expense to marshal their resources and all that. So tomorrow, we're gonna meet and try to finalize at least the content of the plan, if not the costs, at some point. I spent a lot of time going through a lot of our history, 'cause, uh, the document that I drafted so far is a feel-good story to the town to say, "You guys have got a wonderful, wonderful resource." And these finances are, uh, started with the budget, the most recent budget in format, and Bob went through and did a lot of evaluations, and got data from Anthony, uh, from the historical data. And the story is terrific. The golf course, up until Anthony got really, really, really conservative with this budget, has operated on an operating, well, on an operating basis, the first table, revenue, operating costs, operating profits, been in the black for as long as anybody can remember. If you add the debt service, the main chunk of which comes from this building, then you end up with a full profit and loss for Smith that's netted the debt service. And you see, that pushes it into negative. What isn't in any of these data is the revenue that Bob generates for the town through his youth programs. And you can see for two thousand and one, two, and three, uh, in two thousand and three, generated forty-two thousand dollars. This year's probably gonna beat that, I would think, uh, so it almost offsets the operating, the full P and L operating loss at Smith with the youth program.
Is that just revenue, Bob, or?
Yeah, it's, yeah, um, it's net of, it's something else.
It does, it goes towards the.
Yeah, it's net of.
But I just think why he wants to cash it, I don't know.
It's part of the record, it's a part of the record.
It goes in the program.
And it may not appropriate to have it accrue all to Smith because some of these programs go on, or whatever. Then you add Carl Dickman, which has been in the black all the way along, and at the bottom, you get the combined total. On an operating profit basis, throughout this whole period, we're making a half million dollars or better. Uh, after allowing for the debt burden, we're still in the black. So, I think the story that we talked about as a committee is to say to the town, "Oh, and additionally to this, we're generating four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in, in charity revenue." Uh, there are other things that are, uh.
Is the range in there?
Golf course, yes.
Range's in there, right?
Yeah.
But as a, as a side, I mean, the, the debt service decreases annually from here on out.
Yeah, this is.
And revenue obviously will go up as, you know, rainstorm and, and particulate.
And range.
And dry range, yeah.
Well, yes and, yes and no, debt service for the building will go down, where you're gonna also incur debt from driving range five-hundred and something, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we're putting into that right now. Whatever we end up spending on the ten-year plan is gonna be part of the debt, or, so, it may be like this for the next ten years, that's five-hundred and fifty thousand.
Why, why did the debt service go up by two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, except they took an interest rate?
Kind of start the plan, because it's built.
No, they, they, they should reset the bottom.
Yeah.
They staggered on it over three years, so it ranked up over three years. If you wanted to save, we have the numbers.
Yeah.
So this is the history. We're gonna work on projects tomorrow, what do we wanna do going forward? And right now, our scope is everything, R-three, building, H Smith Richardson, et cetera, uh, as we're working numbers. And once we get that plan put in place, then we're gonna have to start talking about, okay, what are the specifications, and what are they to do for us? And we're trying to meet every other week to have a final story.
Trying to kill us.
If I can do it, you can do it. Anyhow, no, that's not, that's not right, that shouldn't say that. So, uh, so that's where we are, that's what we're working on, you guys are welcome to come to the meetings, anybody that wants to come and contribute. Uh, and we'll keep moving forward, and, uh, hopefully, next month, we'll have a much more comprehensive report.
Just to add to, uh, your timeline, though. Obviously, I'm, I'm all for going forward, provided we're ready to go forward. But I think the most important part for September would be that we have ballpark figures on what we wanna put on the waterfall chart, so if that's gonna be a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand the next five years or the next ten years, then at least we can, I can say at that meeting, without all the nitty-gritty details, we're working on a ten-year plan, we wanna drop this in on the waterfall chart, so you guys aren't surprised when we come to you, and if that is next September, that's a year from now, next September, when we have it all ironed out, then at least they're not like, "Oh, this wasn't on the waterfall chart," and go, "What if it's come?" Right, but it's not on there right now, so these are all numbers we have to get on that chart.
Right.
Which is what they asked for, right?
Yeah.
They did.
Yeah. So that's where we are, where are we going? Any questions? Welcome to Peter among the morning, the day day. Did you guys met with Tim this request, did, did anything come out of that? That could have been.
It was, it was quite good. Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was a good meeting with Tim, uh, he, he was, uh, sort of the conservation expert, uh, so we talked a lot about drainage and, uh, course conditions and things of that nature, what we'd be able to do without permits, with permits, what we never think of doing. It seems like, nothing came up during that meeting that I think would have a negative impact on anything we're running right now.
What would permits require?
Take the example, uh, if we were to change drainage, and we've got a twelve-inch pipe or an eight-inch pipe going across in drainage, if we wanted to make that a twelve-inch pipe, that'd require a permit.
Have we ever answered the question of whether the drainage system is documented?
Well, I have, I have, I have, I have a map, a hand-drawn map from the seventies.
Hand-drawn map?
Yeah, like, I can bring them again to you to look at tomorrow, but they're, I'm, I'm, the only copies that exist, my alley. I was afraid. Yeah, yeah, 'cause we're, we've been out there working and trying to get, like, you can talk about cart paths, like, over there on the center, we're trying to have a place for water to go, so I don't wanna have, you know.
Throw sun down.
Put, put, put a new cart path down, and they go, "Well, we need to go tear it up, because we gotta put drainage underneath it," so.
Well, if any of the drainage force that you envisioned at this point lead you to needing a mess.
I didn't, I wouldn't have thought so.
Yeah, a lot of it was the, uh, the tall grass cutting, like, the, I don't know, fourth, uh, fourth tee. I cover the outside maybe once, twice a year, but the inside, once a year. They talked a little about that entrance, the right, uh, the west side, we first come in here, and it's, because I don't, I don't take a look at that, we never talked about that, the comment. It's, it's all a little grass, terrible, like.
Does the pond on, in front of eighteen or in front of ten, do it come up, where it's overgrown?
I'm really saying, it's not allowed in fact.
Can't touch it all?
Yeah.
What's the issue once a year, I guess, my question.
Well, I'm only ensuring that you can.
How do you, how do you get at that?
Oh, I'm always gonna have, I get, uh, another venture out pretty now. Got it in the place, get a, uh, brush on, brush cutter, whatever, whatever they sell.
Those ponds can't be going in, what, they can't be drained? I'm a layman, so.
I mean, I can, I can, I mean, I can put a pump, because there's a place you have to put the pump in, and it would just, it should, that would drain it down. But we did that, uh, whatever, it was high-yershole, we drenched it.
But how, I mean, I, you, I'm trying to understand, how do you get all that junk out of the pond, it's twenty or thirty feet into the pond?
Oh, you're talking about in the middle of the pond?
Yeah.
That just fades away, I mean, uh, I don't, I don't, I'm not allowed to touch that.
There were people.
I don't know.
Who, they, I think, I think it was flush.
And that, that may be required for.
That should, oh, yeah. I promise you that, even state, at this level.
So you're talking about just what you've done around, like, the, the pond, the tee?
And they're, they're all supposed to have, uh, the.
No bow where to go.
No bow where to go, never.
But the net isn't there anymore.
Yeah, but, um, I did, it, for me, um, three and eighteen here, I can cut down right up to a wall. But, uh, on the other side, I can't.
All right, Mike, thank you, appreciate that, these numbers are helpful too, yeah. Let's see where we are. Look forward to more? Hmm? We'll look forward to more, or look forward to more.
Yeah. So, we'll keep at it. We never let these guys go. Right, Laurie?
Best decision to get off that thing. Chairman.
Uh, let's see, um, old business, um, okay, so, um, Bob reached out, uh, with Go, and, um, asked about, uh, whether or not, um, we might have an issue with bots being used to circumvent the reservation system, and for Bob, Sarah, and Lori. Um, this did come up, um, last year, I think. Well, I think it was sometime last year, soon after Core kind of came around. Um, somebody said that they bought a bot or made a bot, and, um, were able to get in. Um, Bob checked with four up, um.
Yeah, his, his response was adequate for my concern.
Yeah, but I don't think anybody else.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Um, so, um, I'll just summarize kind of what, um, and this is really isn't new news, um, but I think it kind of puts it to bed now. Um, so anyway, so, um, four up uses AWS, Amazon's web system, operating system, um, which is, you know, fairly well-known, they have a lot of money over there. Um, and, uh, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, according to four up, they feel that that's really kind of, that's anti-bot, uh, system out there. Uh, when the system does, when AWS detects that a bot may be in use, that's when they capture, technology kicks in, and so it's, you have to check the thing, or you do the pictures, um.
I never.
Yeah, so, you know, you can definitely buy bots, I think you said you did.
I heard from, I've been down this road, um, my only thing about bot game is, uh, it's like the cat and mouse game.
Yeah.
Bots, or the kid get really hard, make a bot, and then the software catches up.
Yeah.
I, uh, I don't see a strict pattern of who's getting the time, clearly that would make me say, oh, this guy's always getting used to this.
Yeah.
Some people are definitely better at it than others. But four up says, make sure you're using curls, clear your cookies, make sure you have the fastest internet speed possible, and use your fastest device, and it's literally a rate at five oh oh.
Yeah, and that's to your point, to that point, so, um, there are thirty-three premium tee times, which are times before one-thirty. We get about three hundred people, between two and three hundred people on there, trying to book tee times at five AM, so.
Members.
Members game, um, but, um, um, to your point, there's people out there that are really smart, and they wanna do stuff, so, um, AWS is really smart, and they wanna, you know, they're doing stuff as well, so, you know, could there possibly be something there?
Are you there for a month or five, are you finding a way to get a time, or a couple of times, find a way to get a time, or that?
They can, you know, five hundred people going on at five AM?
No, not many, they still need.
Two to three hundred.
At most four, like, on, like, Father's Day.
Or thirty-three, four.
Uh, I mean, thirty-three, what I call premium times.
Yeah, like, they do like four, one-thirty.
Uh, it's, uh, I, I personally think four up is too efficient, and it's, it's good.
Yeah.
It works.
Yeah. So I really don't think we, we have an issue, um.
I don't know what you can do.
I don't know what you can do about it, even if it did. We're at the mercy, we have a.
Raptor being.
They're doing what they can do, so.
And, and Tasher uses four up too, right?
Sure. It's, it's, it's used a lot of high-volume public golf courses. Because we all, yeah, so, the Disney course.
Yeah, we're not the only ones out there, but Tasher opens it up to everybody.
They still have the same volume funnel and problem.
Yeah. So I think that kind of puts that to bed here for now, um. New business, uh, driving range, rate, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn that over to Bob. First of all, uh, the driving range current cost, six dollars for forty-two balls, I believe to be the cheapest golf ball you can buy in Connecticut, which is, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
Good thing, because we provide the service. Best thing going forward, and my recommendation would be, uh, so if you study top tracer, and where they're getting places that use top tracer, um, I think a fair price would be ten dollars for fifty-five balls. So you go six for forty-two, to ten for fifty-five, and then I would do a warm-up bucket of twenty-two balls for five, for a guy who just wants to hit the forty way, is what I would suggest.
So you wouldn't have a forty-ball bucket?
You could, I mean, you could make as many varieties as you want.
The comp on the top tracer is that.
I mean, we're still, we're probably gonna be, uh, forty percent cheaper than anywhere else.
Yeah.
And we. Eighteen bucks?
Yeah. Still, uh, seventy bucket, seventy-two, I think it is, at, um, Shelton, the one.
The hot green thing?
Yeah. I think it's twenty-three dollars.
It's expensive, no?
No, I know, they're like.
No, they're crappy in the top tracer.
Like, I, I, if you go on, you can go on top tracer's site, and they search me.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And you can see, uh, so I, I think you're still being in that affordable category, um, and I think by giving them balls, more balls, it might make it a little less painful and an increase, but that's my suggestion. And when we ran the numbers for the budget that we just approved, we were using the assumption of ten as our, as our number, just so everybody's on the same page. I have a slight increase in, uh, bucket, I can't remember the percentage, but we said we'd see a slight increase because of the new driving range and the increase, so that was the number we did use.
I like to find, and I like, I like to have buckets as well.
Yeah.
Warm-up bucket.
Yeah, well, that's what, like, the guy in Britain, I, his mind was working pretty much when he's charging two, getting a little more.
Are you saying a, a half bucket, so five bucks?
Yeah, well, no, a little less than half, but you, yeah, because if you make it the same, they'll be confused, well, why don't I just get two balls?
I think a small bucket.
I can't hit seventy-five balls.
No, I, we want to.
I give a four. But a forty-ball bucket is just way, but.
So let's say we give up task four, sixty-five.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Oh, fifty-five, I do.
Right now, we're six for forty-two, so if you go up thirteen balls.
One thirty percent?
Yeah, right, and then we're going up.
Sixty-six percent more money.
Yeah.
That's okay.
I think it's a compromise there, to be able to.
Yeah, people have to understand it can be a little bit more money, and it's a little too cheap now, and nobody's been hard with it, so.
It's time, but I think, I, I don't know, I don't know if, if they'll be sticker shocked or not, but hopefully. What we're giving, what we're giving them, I think it's after the bowler, but I, I don't see that, I don't. I think the man's gonna be strong.
I'm looking for the sticker shock in some of the small buckets. You know, what's happened last time they did this, people, um.
There's one size.
There's one size, when they raise the rate, you remember that, and, and then. And then people didn't hit all the balls, and they took them, and they left them for other people. But I think by having the five-dollar bucket for twenty-two, you'll get rid of that, because that didn't last.
So, a five-dollar bucket, I'm going to go...
Twenty-two. Twenty-two.
I think it's probably an elevated experience, right?
No doubt about it. You guys go on Top Tracer, and look, you're going to probably go back to, maybe we should look at fifteen dollars, whatever, I think it remains...
Well, you could eventually throw a third option, and have a bigger bucket, and charge more money too, if someone wants to be there for a long time.
For ten bucks is a seventy-five ball bucket.
Fifty-five.
Fifty bucks.
Fifty bucks.
And five bucks is twenty-two. Okay. And currently, a six-dollar bucket is forty-two.
Forty-two.
Yeah, I like that. Okay, fifty-five, there. I can...
Is this something we need to blow up?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, the way...
So, these are the numbers that we go to effect when...
Top Tracer we go...
When it opens up. Yeah, not now.
Which would be approximately...
It's fall, though.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're, this thing should be done, hopefully, by end of August, maybe we're fully operational on August first.
And it's all by the red card right now, but that's good, so...
And let's, if you want to rush now, which doesn't do too much anymore before the rate...
We could change them whenever we want, I see the rate, if this is what we come up with, we can change it with another motion, another vote, right? I'm good with this.
I mean, a motion that we, uh, when the driving range rebuild is complete, that we adopt a price of ten dollars for a fifty-five ball bucket, and five dollars for a twenty-two ball bucket.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that everybody?
Good.
Motion?
Pass. Thank you.
And that is consistent with your three hundred thousand dollar budget?
Did it fit right in there?
Fit right in.
Good logic.
Okay.
Got that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just needed to know who did the second one. Thank you.
And the only extra part, we've got a track race for fifty thousand bucks a year for the license, if it don't end at this current budget. And that's it, there's no staffing, there's no other material equipment?
It'd be a little more staffing if we're up, open later, auto log or other, and a little longer season. I feel...
I'll...
We'll see. Can't be open all winter, once the ground freezes, we don't have a back down, that's just true. It's fifty-three cents a fall. This is math, they're going to... But we're hoping for a, a greater season, for sure, I think it should be longer, I think, ten and a half, or so. And we have visibility, and we get a good spell of weather, we can open it up.
So, you're redoing the screens on either side during the project? Are they going to be higher?
No.
Okay. We're going to clean out, if you face the driving range, the left side is going to get cleaned out, because it's going to become the short range track area, there's not any balls that go over there, we can get that.
But that's not happening yet.
No, that's...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have an architect for that, Bob?
Uh, we've talked to three of them already.
I'm wondering if we should have talked to them about letting the cart path lay out, of course.
Okay, moving on, um, you guys all got... Did you include the email? I think you did, right?
Yep.
We do some more in the business first.
Oh, yeah, sorry, pause, hold on, yeah, fire away, sorry.
Just, uh, two quick things, um, I haven't seen any tees on the tee boxes, so thank you for...
That's good.
Actually, I did see, right after we spoke, you probably hadn't sent a letter yet, but I haven't seen any recently, so that's, that's thanks to that. Uh, the final question is, is there a rate for town employees that's different? Someone's approached me, and, uh, are there any special rates for town employees, is my question?
Yeah. Uh, not that I've never heard of, um, I think we're overrun with round that it is. But if you read in the bylaws, it says it is up to your discretion, right, in the region? I think it's a commission, a commission discretion. I've been here, there's been, um...
Apparently, years ago, there was, I wasn't involved at the time.
Well, I don't recall.
Well, this was when Tim Daly was on, so it was probably ten, twelve years ago, maybe fifteen years ago, I don't know. The individual has approached me, is employed in, in Bridgeport as a teacher, and he gets to play the wheels or nothing, apparently. So, it's happening, he's also employed here as a coach, um, so if you tell me there's no...
Okay, how many, how many employees in town?
Five hundred.
Well, five hundred on the town side, fourteen or fifteen hundred on the board of the...
That would be two thousand.
Two thousand employees.
And we got a lot for them.
I'm not suggesting, I'm asking a question.
Yeah, what would be the off, when the email, when the email came from this individual, uh, my first thing was, I hadn't heard of any discounted rates for the employees. I reached out to Bob, and then I also started thinking about town employees that I know that play here regularly, and I looked them up and saw that they pay normal, non-resident rates, and I was like, okay, or you've got to see the pass, and whatever, and that was, you know, what I relayed to Bob as well, so...
So, do we know, have any idea how many town employees play, or we wouldn't have ever known that, do you just have a little?
Well, I knew a couple of... If you were going to do that, you'd have to broadcast it to town employees, that this is part of their human resource tax.
Yeah, okay.
But I couldn't just pick one guy today, uh, because that would leave me, and I'm awkward, oh, man, I always want to be in that position. I think they would have to give it all, too, and I think at least, they would do full-time employees first. And the part-time employees, I don't think would ever get...
I think coming in, the condition is for seventeen years, and I've never heard this said before, or any five years today. Go ahead.
All right, the next was the email communication from Kelly, who's a Bloodlow cross-country coach. And so, um, if you all read, just to give again, Bob, Sarah, and Laurie, um, update. Last year, she came to us and requested a, um, as she said in the, in the email, to use, um, part of the golf course for their cross-country game. Right now, or prior to that, they, they raised down by the, I think they cobbled together, uh, a course, uh, at Bloodlow, Bloodlow Middle School, High School, Middle School, and I wasn't afraid, they were kind of on roads, and they were partially on the track. It wasn't kind of a true cross-country. So, she came to us, um, she had laid out a course, um, don't have the pictures here, and utilized the, the driving range, kind of went back behind there, Bob, right, past the back, around somewhere, kind of came back, they made kind of a loop, I don't know if they did a couple, a couple of loops in there. It does shut down the, the range from noon on, or so, I can't really, I can't remember what they did last year, but somewhere around there, right? Yeah, I think they probably raced right after school. And so, uh, we approved it last year, and she's asking, uh, to have a redo on that this year. She wasn't available until comes out, um, she's coming August, I think, so August, maybe, or something, it's fine, we need her to come here and explain it. So, it's, I said, we, do we need her?
You know, these are two explains, I mean, she did expand it this year, I was opposed to it last year, I spoke again, it seemed like it was fine. The reason I'm opposed to it, and I'll reiterate this again, is the fact that we have to close the driving range. That's my only issue, but, um, we did it last year, it worked out fine, wasn't a killer...
Wasn't the market going to shut down for the golf course this year, though?
No, 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 I meant it was the driver.
Yeah.
And this was on October event?
Yeah, it was a Monday and a Monday, do you remember, was it staying last year?
I think it was the same Monday.
Was it the same Monday?
I'm pretty sure the one she's asking for, we haven't had it.
Oh, okay.
That day.
October third?
Whatever, they, uh, maybe it was three, October, Monday.
Uh, I'm sorry, October seventh, October seventh.
And Monday?
That's a Monday. Right, so the, the, the range would be shut down for a little bit up there.
She also has to get permission from the Parks and Rec Commission, because she's asking for the softball field to be shut down as well.
Just to, to free up parking, I think, more than...
Yeah, it was for parking, and she wants that area in front of the softball field mowed, so they can park, so...
She keeps asking for more.
Yeah, but, yeah, even if you approve it, it could still be denied at the Parks and Rec level, but...
Right, but if, if they, if they do not approve it, that would just be limiting, so, the issues were, kind of, parking was the big one. Um, you know, where, where they're going to put buses, and...
And I can't recall what they did last year.
We put them in peaks, we put buses in the peaks, maybe...
Oh, okay.
How many, how many schools?
Three or four.
Something like that.
Yeah, they were four.
Yeah. Do we have an issue with, do you recall if there was real big issue down here on, I think we have an outing, that's going to be a different thing.
Yeah, um...
Is there a big outing?
I'm sure, uh, um, I don't, I'm glad, the outing is, I don't know if that's a good or bad, I guess there'll be more people in the race, because they can't get on the course.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Monday on October?
Yeah, it won't be so much. Oh, I'm, I'm personally, I don't think my vote counts at all, but I think it was a great community event, the kids raised about it, the kids were... Right, you're right, no, you're right. Uh, and it's like, I don't know, they run in the trees, it's supposed to be cross-country.
Yeah, so, it, it, as Bob said, it went up rate last year, I really don't think, I don't recall it having any issues, I don't think we had anybody complain.
So, it's like a two to four kind of thing?
Yeah, maybe two to five, and then we can, with the lights, we, I will be able to open up after it.
Oh, yeah. I have no problem, for the community, it sounds like a good, good thing to do.
So, I'm in favor of, of, of having it again.
Works for me.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
All right, someone want to make a motion?
Motion to let, um, the other non-cross-country team, Kelly and my coach, have the, uh, driving range a couple hours on Monday, October seventh, for us, after the...
Captain?
All in favor?
Aye.
Patrick, Anthony shutting it down, though.
I think she went to a conservation meeting, too.
I think she did.
Yeah, because the trails, yeah.
As, uh, as Parks and Rec denies the softball shutdown, she can still do the, she can still do the, just, the parks might just be a little... I wouldn't recommend the thing they know. I would want to do it tomorrow, uh, it's not only...
Like, ten degrees, no?
Yeah. I guess, probably not the only one, yeah. You want me to reject her, or you want me to reject her?
Of course, if you can tell it was a proof thing.
I'll do that, I'll come in and go to you with...
All right. Public comment?
Well, you know, the only one here. Hi, Don D. Martino, Sunset Circle, here for you. Um, first, it's great to hear your long-term planning process, and it's a wonderful thing you guys are doing. I just wanted to mention, as you look at cart paths, really consider curvaceous pavement, I think we quoted it way back when, but as, as you look at the plan, and it may be a good option for looking drainage, for not washing out, and here is like the ninth hole, or whatever that cart path will get into the next. But it's probably a good option, so...
If it's all curvaceous or curvaceous pavement? Is that the stuff they use when they have the train station?
I'm not sure, but it's like, it's a grid that you just put gravel inside of, instead of hard peeing on asphalt, it's just a...
It drains better.
It drains better, yeah. We had to wind out, and I think everyone, I don't know if you'll, um, you'll have an architect or a little town engineering speaking part of the course path planning process, or will it be an outside, just a design-build contractor, but...
People with the gas are all up in the air on that.
Well, you may just want to, you know, get some feedback from them.
All good, please, bear that.
Thank you. Um, okay, if nothing else, one to adjourn?
And then we adjourn, so, the cart section.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not again.
All right, we'll be right early, yeah, right back at it.